We're having a workshop today. We appreciate all you all coming. The first item is to say the Pledge of Allegiance. This is the third workshop in a series of four workshops with regard to sand mines and issues regarding sand mines. Currently, there is a 12-month county moratorium processing mining permit or site plan applications. That moratorium will expire January 7th, 2009. During the moratorium period, the county is reviewing its mining regulations. That's why we're here. A central component of that review is a series of Planning and Zoning Commission workshops devoted to the specific local mining issues. We've been through two already. The first was groundwater and surface water discharge impacts. We went through the last one was traffic and nuisance. Today is going to be compatibility and notice. We have one more to go. For those of you all who don't know, it's scheduled for August 13th, 2008, and that's going to be compliance and enforcement. The hope today is we're going to pull together what we've done to some extent in the first two workshops, trying to fit the groundwater, our environmental concerns and/or traffic concerns into how it works with compatibility of the property, surrounding property, and then deal with notice issues. And then the fourth would be maybe how we deal regulations and how we make compliance more applicable or workable. So with that in mind, Mr. Bowling, I know that you are ready to go start us off.
Thank you Chairman Hamner. For the record, I'm Stan Bowling, County Planning Director, and I'll be making a presentation. That'll take a while, and then Public Works is scheduled after that.
Should we settle in then?
Well, maybe. Again, as you had mentioned, Mr. Chairman, this is the third of four workshops, and this particular workshop, we're focusing on compatibility and notice. Just for the record and anyone who may be watching later on, there's a lot of information on the county website under mining regulations. It's kind of the center of the homepage. All the presentations for all the workshops and the staff reports and so forth are on there, so it's easily accessible from the web. A couple of things as we start looking at compatibility and notice requirements. One of the first things that we wanted to just kind of reiterate actually is what are the characteristics of mining operations that we're talking about? And there are efforts going on in other counties right now that staff and probably others are keeping track of. But one thing that I wanted to remind everyone of was some of the differences between what we'd call major mining counties and the type of mining that we have in Indian River, because there are some different scales and different impacts. There's some things to learn from these jurisdictions, but there are other things that don't truly apply. There are several counties listed here that have major mining activities. You've seen this from the Strategic Resource Committee from the state, and Chuck Kramer had used this graphic and some notes on it to show some of the major areas in Florida of deposits of limestone and sand resource. And these major mining counties have large deposits. It's either hard aggregate, lime rock, or phosphate. These mines cover several thousands of acres, large exposed areas, mining life of 70 to 100 years, and scale and certain impacts are different, especially if you get into phosphate mining. There's a lot of differences there. For Indian River County mining, when we're looking at compatibility and trying to kind of gauge the parameters of mining in Indian River County, it's primarily sand and fill. Local development is dependent upon local supply. We do have scattered deposits of cokina, still a bit of an unknown. We've had pockets have showed up in some of the mines that we've had over the years locally, but pretty small. There seems to be a bit of a concentration of the cokina that is in the county along the I-95 corridor. We'll get into that in just a moment. Mostly local use, so we don't have much exporting of locally mined materials. Smaller in scale in the major counties. We don't have blasting or active chemical agents involved. That has a whole nother set of impacts in some of the other counties. And we don't have some of the contamination and cleanup issues, especially you have with respect to phosphate mining. In Indian River County, the size of the sites vary, 40 to 300 acres. We have active phases limited to 20 acres. We have setbacks, and what we've tended to see on projects is anywhere from 150 feet, which is the minimum, to 400 feet from property lines of all the onsite activities. Again, the material mined is sand, fill, and cokina, and the mine life maximum. And in none of the regulations from other jurisdictions that we have reviewed, and there've been three dozen, we've not seen a mining life limitation that we have in this county. That's 10 years maximum. Access is controlled off of collector arterial roads. You all revisited the days and hours of operations, and you're familiar with those. The end condition, at the end of the mining life, the reclaimed state, and we have new regulations that are now in effect with our landscape code changes, that any of the ponds that will be created will be non-rectilinear ponds, and they'll have literal zone plantings. So that's a requirement that would apply to any newer operations going forward. We also have multiple sites, though, and cumulative impact, because a lot of the material, just sand and fill, it can be made available in a lot of different locations. So there are possibilities for multiple sites and cumulative impacts of mines. The locations that we've had in the past, I just wanted to kind of reiterate, and if you look at the mines where they have been over time, they have been close to the urban service area inside the urban service area. That's the black line here that includes the unincorporated area of the county and municipalities. And in the past, we've had mines that are, again, kind of on the edge of development, pretty close to development at the time that the mining operations occurred in different areas of the county. And kind of the more recent wave has been outside the urban service area in agriculturally designated areas, I'd say since the early 90s. And they're located close to the urban service area that kind of cuts down on the travel time, the hauling cost, to the demand areas which are inside the urban service area. We've also had a few that came in out in the A3 area, our westernmost area, but those were all had direct access to State Road 60, even this mine here. And these were approved and essentially came about to supply materials to the State Road 60 widening project. And that's really the reason for their location. In Indian River County, mining has been allowed in agricultural areas for 40 years or more. You go back to the 1960s, and it's allowed in there. It's not really mentioned in the 1950s code requirements. This graphic illustrates the urban service area in red, and then our three agricultural designated areas. This particular color here, mostly east of 95, is the AG1 area. It's five acre minimum lot size. Mostly east of US1, I'm sorry, mostly east of I-95, between I-95 and the urban service area. There's also kind of a five acre area around Felsmere that's still AG1. Then in this lighter shade of green is the AG2 area. Most of this area has been, is land that's been cleared and used for agricultural production. And then we have the, basically, the marsh and conservation area here that's in white. And then in the darker green is the AG3 area, 20 unit, I'm sorry, 20 acre minimum lot size. There are reasons for allowing mines in the ag areas, which is what the existing comp plan and regulations allow for. There's a, it allows the necessary size of mining sites, the size requirements require areas where there are larger land holdings and parcels, and that's what you have in the AG areas. The cokina deposits, though they're limited, do seem to be in the AG1 and AG2 areas on both sides somewhat of I-95. So that's where one of the resources is located specifically. It's also proximity to the demand areas, especially in the AG1 areas. And there's the kind of efficient delivery distance, which, again, staff went into this in some detail in the meeting pack, and Public Works will go over a little bit later. The long-term use is something also to keep in mind, that the mining operation itself is really an interim land use. The long-term use are ponds and associated green space. And in the past, those have been used primarily either for residential. We've had examples of these being converted to kind of suburban densities or rural residential densities, or just pond operations for ag. The ag areas have larger sites and fewer people, and that's one of the aspects of the AG1 areas. There can be larger separations between uses, which can be an advantage when there are conflicts. And also, there are just fewer people. It's less dense. And the past experience has actually been a two-edged sword, really. There's been experience in the past with well-run mines that are not incompatible. There's always conflicts. There's always problems. It's a question of responsiveness, and some of the best management practices that have been discussed. And obviously, you know, one of the reasons for the moratorium in these very workshops is that we've also had the other experience, the last year and a half or so along 82nd Avenue with lots of conflicts and complaints. One bit of information I wanted to share with you all, Lee County is toward the end of their one-year moratorium. That's over in September, and they've commissioned a very large study. They are one of those counties that have large mining operations. They have aggregate resource, hard lime rock, large areas, large mining concerns. They have big regional, kind of regional wetland and conservation area issues and conflicts with their mining. But, so there are differences between Indian River and Lee County, but one of the, the report that just came out at the very end of June from Dover Coal and Partners, it's available online, is an assessment of some of their land use practices. And one, one thing that they have recognized in their report is a difference between mining for filled dirt or sand versus, you know, exportable materials like the hard rock and the aggregate. And what they've recommended in their study is that the filled dirt, which can be mined in various locations, it's not, you know, specifically resource-dependent in one particular deposit area, should be located near demand areas. And that by doing that, you actually have fewer miles traveled with the haul traffic and fewer roads affected, and ultimately, fewer people affected in the big picture. And that's what their recommendation is, is to kind of treat filled dirt and kind of the common mining, which is what most of what Indian River County has, a little bit differently than the rest of the mining activities, and to locate them near to demand areas. Other counties primarily with sand and fill mining, like Indian River County, have conditional use approval allowances in agricultural areas, and that's in your backup material. That's results based on a survey by Lee County staff of over two dozen counties. Also, I wanted to point out that the Indian River County's Agricultural Advisor Committee looked at the whole table of uses allowed in our agricultural areas, and when it came to mining, recommended that they did not, let me say what they did not recommend. They did not recommend that they be prohibited from any of the ag districts, but to be a special exception use. And we'll get into that a little bit further. That's more of a process issue. Compatibility in defining it for purposes of looking at land uses, we define this as location arrangement, control of differing land uses in a manner that results in harmony among uses, or coexistence with no significant conflicts between the uses. And the approach to mining compatibility in Indian River County in terms of the policies and the regulations that we have now, and so far, the potential regulations, is really kind of in two steps. And one is that, at the end of the day, with the groundwater issues to be addressed, reclaimed sites should complement agricultural and residential uses. The long-term ponds and associated green spaces, if done right, should be complementary in an agricultural setting. And then the second part is, well, what about the interim use, 10 years during the life of the mine? And the approach in the comprehensive plan and in the LDRs, and so far, in looking at potential regulations coming out of the first two workshops, is to avoid significant conflicts by addressing the adverse impacts and to take what's actually causing the problems and addressing each one specifically. The first two workshops looked at kind of generically three issues really, environmental, nuisances, and traffic, and potential regulations were identified. In the meeting workshop backup, we have a number of these, a whole list of potential regulations. Those are not worded to be, you know, all the specifics that an actual formal LER amendment would have, but to give essentially, you know, a statement of what the regulation would cover. There would be a lot more work to be done. But there are 30 potential regulations in the first two workshops that address conflicts. And that's really kind of the overlap between compatibility and the first two workshops that have already been conducted. One is addressing roads and traffic condition. That's probably, when you get right down to it, the major complaint and conflict issue is what's going on on the roadways itself. It's the most difficult probably to enforce, and what we've had the most complaints about, especially along 82nd Avenue and more recently. And there's a number of potential regulations that can address, you know, specific parts of that, of that potential conflict. Noise and vibration, same thing, onsite, but mostly offsite is where most of the concerns have been with what impacts the trucks have. And a lot of that has to do with the adequate road surface maintenance and speed control. Those are probably two of the main noise and vibration type of aspects is the truck traffic itself. Degraded air quality is, again, onsite and offsite, but what is recommended so far is a comprehensive dust control plan. That's onsite and offsite. And a lot of these issues, as you may remember, at the end of the last workshop, we talked about coming up with a local, you know, list or guidebook of best management practices. And we are putting that together in the interim. Between this workshop and the last one, I've passed out to you all at one evening meeting, kind of where we are with that. And we're even further along at coming up with something that can handle some of those issues. The other issues were environmental, degraded surface waters, and a lot of these would require more baseline data and monitoring reports and so forth that would compare conditions over time to baseline conditions. And that includes surface water and groundwater level impacts. And also getting this kind of improved information and analysis to the agencies that have expertise, St. John's and DEP. Same with groundwater contamination issues. One other item that really kind of gets to compatibility with, especially immediately adjacent properties, is protecting adjacent wetlands and upland areas, and also making sure that none of the mining sites themselves, you know, wind up destroying wetlands or upland areas. But if you have larger sites where mines are allowed, there should be no excavation of wetland areas or upland areas. They should be worked around. They should be set back from. That came out of the first workshop, and that's, that's what's addressed in some of these potential regulations. So again, the approach has been to look at the specific potential conflict and the impacts that are associated with that conflict and address those point by point by point. Currently, our existing LDRs allow mining in all the ag areas by administrative permit use. There's no formal notice, although we have instances where someone contacts us, they hear about a project, they see the signs that are required now. When something is going to P&amp;Z, they call us. If they call us and contact us, we contact them. We do this interested parties contact. But no formal notice with the administrative permit process. There are specific land use criteria. It's a type of conditional use, and those items come to the Planning and Zoning Commission approval. There's no Board of County Commissioners meeting unless an applicant or an affected party appealed it. With the special exception process, there is formal notice. There's an advertisement. It's a conditional use as well. And the county has broader discretion to attach compatibility conditions. There's a public hearing in front of the P&amp;Z, and the final decision's made by the Board of County Commissioners at a public hearing. And currently, with special exceptions, there's notices for any, the owner of any property within 300 feet of a project. And one possible change that staff analyzed and actually recommended in the report for this meeting is to expand this notice area. And we looked at, you know, it's appropriate to expand this notice area in the ag areas because you have large parcels. You know, a 300-foot notice requirement might just hit immediately adjacent properties and not go far enough. So we looked at the half-mile notice area that's required for communications towers in ag areas, and felt that that was a precedent essentially, and that was a, that was a way of making sure if the county goes to expanded notice for mining operations, that they notify as many people formally as possible. So staff's conclusion was to continue to allow mines in the ag areas. Don't prohibit them in any of our ag areas. There are reasons for allowing them to happen there. And to address the impacts through the improved regulations. And one point that is, I think, a major point, it's been talked about probably at every workshop so far, is actually the last workshop that we're going to have, the next one in August, and that's on compliance and enforcement. It's true of any regulation. It's probably only as good as compliance and enforcement. So that's a huge issue that we're going to spend a whole workshop on talking about next, next month. Staff also has concluded that mining operations as a use should be reclassified to special exception use. That way, it gets a higher level of scrutiny. There's more discretion by the county in terms of fashioning, compatibility, conditions. And it also, you know, kind of goes through more notice. It allows more input, input at Planning and Zoning Commission, and then ultimately input at the Board of County Commissioners. And then to have as one of the special exception use criteria to this last item, an expanded notice, just like for communications towers in ag areas, have expanded notice half-mile of any project site, mining site that's proposed in an ag area. That's it for the planning staff presentation. I'd like to turn things over to Chris Moore for a moment to go over some issues related to, you know, local needs for fill and impact of distance from mines to demand areas, because that's, that does have an impact on the appropriateness of location.
Chris?
Okay.
While he's setting up, Stan, I know the one thing, did we, did you all do any research or look at numbers of mines, like together or groups or in areas? You mean, we talked about the compatibility or potential of having impacts of one, two, four, six mines?
Right. Actually, as far as mines that have either been approved or applied for, and even looking at the three that were applied for, you know, Wild Turkey, Sanco, and Cairns, those actually have kind of maintained the same kind of separation as mines have had, you know, in previous decades around certain demand areas.
Historically.
What's really kind of different about, I'd say, the 82nd Avenue area is it's a pretty, it's a pretty long corridor. It's a long north-south roadway. You've got about four and a half, five mile stretch in there. So it's a, it has had, in the case of Wild Turkey, where the third application to come through, it'd be the third mine on that. But if you, if you kind of look at the distances involved, it's comparable to what, what we've had before.
Thank you. Okay.
Could I ask two questions?
Certainly. Be a dollar for each one.
As there, I noticed you said that Lee County is considering closeness, in effect, of mines to where the dirt's going to be used. Have we ever had a map that would show a single mine and then where that material went? Do we have any kind of a map like that?
I don't think we, staff would have a map. I think actually the operators would have a better idea of where, and it probably, you know, maybe project by project. You know, they may have 20% going to individual lot owners in, say, Bureau Lake Estates, but then several big projects that really got the bulk of the material. But I think we'd actually have to ask operators, and maybe some of the Public Works staff would have an idea about that.
Another question was, I think at one of the meetings, we had someone that indicated that there was a study or information as to the effect of truck vibration and how far it went with damage to homes. I'm sure that the materials between the two would certainly make a difference. But did you ever receive that?
Did not receive that, but planning staff's talked to Public Works staff after, kind of their debrief after the last workshop. I'm talking about vibrations. Where would vibrations come? Apparently, the vibration's coming from trucks, not the onsite activity. And I'll let Public Works staff speak to that. But I think, I think the bottom line is the condition of the roadway and the speed of the truck have a lot to do with the kind of the pounding that a truck will do at a particular location along a roadway. And how you, how you mitigate against that probably deals with maintaining the road surface and controlling the speeds.
I was just wondering, Stan, because there was a specific study apparently that had been done, was available. And I know that I asked for a copy of it. I guess they just didn't produce it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions before we go into Public Works and Chris Moore? Okay?
I said one.
Okay.
You talked about compatibility in ag and residential areas after the mine is finished?
Yes. In other words, the, the mining, the way mining is set up as a use in Indian River County, the mining operation is really just an interim use. It's 10 years long. The long-term land use effect of the mining operation is a pond and whatever effects that has. And we got into de-watering and groundwater protection and so forth, and then the green area around it. What's, how's that going to essentially be converted to some other use? Is it long-term going to be just a pond for agriculture, used for irrigation? Is it going to be an amenity to a residential project, or even if it's very, very low density? So I think, we were just recognizing the fact that it's a two-step type of land use, really. It's an interim use and then a long-term use. And we think both can be compatible if properly regulated.
Are you going to have, or thinking about guidelines in the long term, especially in agricultural areas?
Certainly.
Yeah. And we will have some.
Right. And I think, in fact, one of the, one of the items, and it depends on the particular issue that you're talking about. Obviously, there are, there are slope requirements. There are shape and literal zone requirements. There's groundwater monitoring that has to be going on. And there are jurisdictions that actually have the monitoring go on for a couple of years after the mine is reclaimed, to look at its effect and its reclaimed state as it goes along. And so there are possibilities for looking at that, too.
Other than residential areas?
Right. What we've tended to see is that it becomes, you know, an amenity to a residential project.
Well, in an agricultural area, you're concerned too about keeping it in the agricultural area around the adjoining area.
Right. That's correct. You don't want any adverse impacts on vegetation of any type.
Or inhibition of spraying or any other agriculture activities?
Right. And that's why, when you look at the, you know, there's, there's buffering requirements around the perimeters. There's setbacks to the, to the surface water itself that's being created and so forth.
Aren't there, the reason I was curious about what he was saying is there aren't the, state has huge reclamation requirements, right? The state, the state of Florida has reclamation requirements unto themselves with through St. John's and everybody, and other people, right?
That's, that's correct, as well as the county.
Which affects any mine. The mines out on 60, they're in the agricultural area, or a mine that would be in a residential area. Has, they, they apply, there's no real separation of residential versus ag in the reclamation, is there?
That's correct. In other words, you don't, they're, they're going to be the same type of requirements for the pond from, from the county standpoint, whether it's being, and it mostly deals with the edges, the slope. The depth could vary greatly depending on the size of it.
I have a question.
Yeah, Jerry.
Yeah. On the special exception classification change, you want to increase it to a half a mile in notification. Is there also notification in newspapers?
Yes.
Legal notice as well?
Yes, for special, that's correct.
Oh, they would have both then?
Yes, for, for both the Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing and the Board of County Commissioners hearing. Ads for both.
Ads for both in a paper. Okay. Thank you. Any other question? All right. Now, Chris.
Thank you. My name is Chris Moore. I'm Assistant Public Works Director for the county. We've got a couple of issues that we're going to cover between myself and Jim Davis. I'm going to run through an example. Community Development asked us to look at an example of the associated costs or additional costs in developing a lot, typical quarter-acre lot. If the, if the mine that provides the fill for that lot were actually moved five miles further out. I'm going to run through an example on that, and then Jim will talk about our local needs for mining fill as far as our road building projects and also our road and bridge division. Stan, if you could flip the... What you see here circled in red is the, a typical, there are calculations showing the additional costs associated with moving a mine five miles further out from where it is today if it were to be used for a lot filling. If you If you take a typical, in this case, we use Verola Estates, but if you take a typical quarter acre section of a lot, which would be 10,890 square feet, and if you had to bring that quarter acre up two feet of fill, you take the 10,890 times two feet to get the number of cubic feet, then divide by 27, 27 cubic feet in a cubic yard, you end up with roughly 800 cubic yards of fill needed to be brought in to bring a lot up two feet. Divide that 807 cubic yards by 15 yards per truck, that's roughly 54 truckloads, and then you multiply that 54 trucks times additional 10 miles, five miles out, five miles back, times $2.13 a mile, and you're adding roughly $1,150 to the cost of a, of a lot filling operation. Now, the $2.13 per mile of cost would include the cost of the additional diesel fuel for a mile and an additional dollar for depreciation of the truck. We used a buck a mile for depreciation, depreciation of the truck, and a dollar 13 for fuel, so that's 213 per mile. That would not include drivers' salaries, insurance costs, fees, that would be inherent with owning the truck and operating it, but just per mile costs in fuel and depreciation at $2.13 a mile would add roughly $1,150 to the cost of filling that lot. Now, this was done, these diesel fuel costs are about three months old, so they're actually a little bit higher now, because diesel's up around 490, 480, 490 a gallon, so using today's diesel fuel costs, it'd actually be a little over $1,200, additional cost to fill a lot. And then I'll let, I'll let Jim Davis speak to our local needs.
Chris, real quick, one thing, the footnote or the down below, that most people don't fill the entire lot, so in your example, if you were thinking if bigger lots may cost more money, but in reality, I mean, it, it may just be that cost.
Right, exactly. I mean, most people, when they, if they own a much larger lot, an acre and a half or an acre, they typically won't fill the whole lot, but they'll, they'll fill up to the house pad and then taper the lot back down to existing grade at the, at the property boundaries. But we used a quarter acre of fill at two feet, to just use a standard example.
Right, okay, thank you.
Now, one thing I wanted to talk about a little bit before I give it to Jim is, there would be most likely additional cost to the mine in that if the mine is located further out, they may not be able to process the same number of trucks in a day, because the trucks would take longer to get back and forth to their target. So, if, if the number of trucks servicing a mine were a fixed amount, then they would end up processing fewer loads, because the, the length of the haul route is actually longer. But if, if true economic theory came into effect and the number of trucks servicing that mine expanded to fill the capability of the mine and it was considered variable, then that, then that may not, the reduced revenue may not be, come into play, but it would have to have a lot more details in order to calculate the effects of reduced revenue on the mines by just being located five miles further out.
Mm-hmm.
And that's all I had on that.
Thank you.
Let Jim speak.
Jim?
Jim Davis, Public Works Director. I'd like to comment on the use of fill material in the county. There are two primary users in our county, as well as probably throughout the state and the nation. You have the private sector use, which in our county, of course, depends on the activity, the construction activity in one particular year, and of course, that's varied tremendously. But you can anticipate in Indian River County that probably over a million cubic yards of material is used locally. Probably in a medium to slow year, a very aggressive year, when development is probably full steam ahead, you're talking more than two, three, four million cubic yards potentially. And the private sector use, the cost, historically, three, four, five years ago, were somewhere around four to $5 a cubic yard. That's the material itself, which used to run between a dollar, $2 a cubic yard, and also the transportation of it. We used to use 18 cents per ton per mile for the trucking, but as Chris just mentioned, with fuel going up so rapidly, that's gone up probably to 40 cents per mile per ton. Now, I'm speaking in terms of tonnage, and Chris was speaking in terms of cubic yard, but most mines have scales, and you can measure the weight of the truck before and after, and they market the material mostly on tonnage, although some people buy by the cubic yard, and they load a 20-yard truck and anticipate that's probably 20 yards. As far as the, the private use, subdivisions these days try to balance their cut and fill. They have to excavate large stormwater ponds, and most engineers locally do the best they can to try to balance cut and fill. Particularly in the 100-year floodplain, which is most of our county west of King's Highway, those stormwater management tracks have to be much larger, because in order to put fill within the floodplain, you have to excavate fill within that same area in the floodplain, and that keeps the flood, floodplain storage about equal. So, when you're in the 100-year floodplain west of town, you're creating larger stormwater tracks, you're balancing your cut and fill, and probably importing less material than back in the days when we didn't have stormwater management lakes. In the eastern part of the county, where you can get perhaps higher densities, and you don't have that floodplain storage requirement, there's probably more importation of fill. You know, there's certain projects, I know of a seven acre track now that where a church is being built, they're importing about 20,000 cubic yards of fill. So, at today's cost, maybe five, $6 a cubic yard for the fill and the placement and the grading, they're talking $100,000 just to build a church in the county. So, the use of the material in the private sector is very difficult to estimate, it just depends on the, the development activity in one particular year. The public sector, the county itself purchases about $100,000 worth of fill a year, and that fill has to be a better quality material, it's called stabilizer, and we use that on the unimproved road network. So, it has to have a bearing capacity that is stronger than just fill that's used for perhaps a yard or a development. It has to have a little more clay in it, and it has to be able to get density so that it can support the weight of vehicles on a daily basis. That material, we pay about $4 a ton for, a few years ago, we used to pay $2 a ton. So, with our $100,000 that's budgeted every year, we're probably purchasing 25,000 cubic yards of stabilizer. We do use general fill, that's not stabilizer, for park projects and other projects that we have, but that's minimal compared to the material we put on the 260 miles of unpaved roads that we maintain. If you move that fill further from the county, then that trucking cost will go up. And trucking cost, of course, has gone up dramatically due to the fuel costs, but also the risk management side of trucking has increased. Insurance has increased, heavy dump trucks, you know, are a liability if the operators aren't careful, so there is a risk management side of that. So, the longer you truck the fill, the more lane miles of roads that truck is traveling in a day, the risk management will go up, as well as the cost and the wear and tear on the roads. Most of the vibration and the wear and tear from the truck is caused by impact loads. The smoother the surface, the less impact, the less vibration. The only complaints we have received in the county due to vibration has been when we're building roads and we're using a vibratory roller, and that roller has a vibratory mechanism where those steel drums are vibrating to compact the material. Then perhaps a quarter to half a mile radius, we get occasional vibration complaints. We, we had that problem when we built Round Island Park in the southern part of the county. A few of those oceanfront property owners called and said, you know, my china's shaking and the china causes it. So, we simply turn off the vibratory mechanism and static roll the material. Static rolling takes longer, you have to make more passes, you don't achieve the, the density quick enough, but you can static roll. As far as a dump truck, if you're, they're traveling on a poorly maintained road with a lot of washboarding, I would think within a quarter to, perhaps at the longest, I think, a half a mile, you may get some vibration complaints. That's pretty much the, the gist, I think, of what I wanted to communicate to you. If I had to answer any questions regarding the use of the material, private versus public, or vibration?
Okay. Any questions for Jim?
I have a question regarding the vibration. I was really hoping we would have those reports. I know we have not received, people have not been talking to us about complaints because of, you know, vibrating to stabilize the road surface. They've been complaining about vibrations from the mining operations, from the dump truck. And I think there is a woman who was here and was actually saying that her china was walking off the shelf. So, you say that the vibration is only felt for a half a mile?
Up to...
I'm saying, that's our experience based on complaints that we have received on, on our projects and on, on trucking complaint.
What about the complaints that were in South, South Florida about the, actually affecting the, the structure itself? The structure of the house, where a lot of people are complaining about the house cracking and settling, caused by the vibrations? That's a little bit more than china just walking off the shelf, that's other, that's a lot heavier impact to a home. Can you tell me, have you seen any numbers on that? Are we still talking a half mile? Are we talking a quarter mile? What are the studies?
Well, the vibration's going to carry, based on the geology of the land area. If you're in Rock Ridge, which has a thin layer of lamrock in the surface of the ground, that lamrock is going to pick up the vibration and transmit it a longer distance. So, if, if the subsurface of the ground is very, very dense and consolidated, vibration will carry further. If you have loose sandy soils, subsurface, like most of, west of the county, west of the One Mile Ridge, you have very, I don't know of any rock lenses, you have, they're shallow, you're not going to transmit vibration, in my opinion, much longer than a quarter to half a mile. I don't know what happened in South Florida, if they're, if they're mining Miami U light, which is lamrock in South Florida, that's a dense substrate, and that vibration's going to carry much further with a dense substrate due to the geological characteristics than sandy soils.
Jim, there were also complaints from 82nd Avenue about structural damage to homes.
Perhaps within a quarter, half a mile away? I wouldn't be surprised if, if those trucks are traveling full, heavy frequency, bad washboardy conditions, you know, that, I wouldn't say that's not possible.
That's, that was my, what I was going to say, is from a realistic standpoint, if we're talking about vibrations on trucks from a mining operation, we only have a few options. One has, starts with the route, but we've got to determine, which is in our recommendations, determine the best route we can. But the second thing was, is that it has to do with the road condition and the speed of the truck. If you, and those three items, I mean, is that, I mean, if we can, if we can, either we either control that or we don't. I mean, if we can't, I don't think you're going to stop vibrations on trucks, I'd like to, so you either reroute them or figure out a route that avoids, you know, the most sensitive areas, or you, and you maintain the road and you maintain the speed of the trucks, is the only thing, is, am I missing something? And you recommend, I mean, because there's anything else we could do to alleviate vibrating on trucks on the mining operation?
Are there different types of trucks would be different vibration rate? You know, dump truck versus a tractor-trail truck, or using the third axle more often, and things like that would stop some of that vibration? Is there any studies on that, that, you know, the smaller tractor-trails that you see going around?
Well, not to, directly on point of what you indicated as far as type of truck, you know, the braking, you know, when a truck breaks and uses those jack brakes, like, I think you had a presentation on it, Chris spoke of a few months ago, perhaps, the braking on a washboardy road is a, can be a problem.
But that's back to the condition of the road.
No, that's the condition of the road, yeah.
And also the substrate.
Right.
You know, that, that vibration has to travel from that wheel load to a residence or whatever, and if you have loose sandy soils, if you have a canal in between, if you have some of these geological...
I guess what I'm driving at, Jim, is there, from a regulatory standpoint, which is what, if you listen to Stan's report, we've got this 30 list of items that we want to try and deal with to alleviate many of the complaints we're having. Is there any, I mean, I don't remember seeing anything in there other than what I just said, which would be route, the condition of the road and speed of trucks, it might affect, maybe that we did, we did talk about the jack brakes, but they would affect, in effect, stop the vibration, unless you can, I mean, is there anything specific, from a regulatory standpoint, can you figure out a way to do that? Better than what we're, we're talking about?
Jim, it would seem that, if you know the conditions of the soil of the road, and you put them in, and the conditions surrounding it for a quarter to a half a mile, you know you're getting home structural damage, it would seem that there would be some type of matrix associated with truck speed and those other conditions that could determine how fast that truck can go under those conditions to reduce the structural damage to the home.
I know, I know, I know of no models or computer models or anything that, that really do that. There, there may be some out there, but we haven't been posed with that problem historically on the last 27 years I've been in this county, I haven't received that much complaint regarding vibration caused by trucks.
How do you set the speed of the trucks?
Well, the roads themselves have a speed limit. You know, on a rural dirt road, we try to keep them 30, 35 miles an hour. When they get up to 50, 55, I think that compounds a problem. But if we can keep the trucks on that dirt road 30, 35, and, you know, that reduces the braking, because so are the trucks, the less braking you have. But I don't know of any studies or models, you know, they almost have to be in a particular area. I mean, you may do a study in, look out Mountain, Georgia, where you have a rock substrate, and that's quite different than sandy soil Florida, where you have totally different geology.
Jim, I have, I have a question, since we have to convert this discussion into regulations.
Right.
I would really, really like to know the difference of the impact of vibrations between having a road asphalt versus sand. Because we may be looking at requiring the, the road be paved, if there's going to be a mine there, and that could be one of the regulations that we're going to be looking at, and I, and I really would like to have that information, so we know whether or not it's, it's going to be of value to the county to say, we need a paved road instead of a dirt road. So, where can we get that information?
I do not know of any comparisons in this area from, I assume if you pave that road, then the vibration's probably going to go to nothing.
But I don't want to make a developer pay hundreds of thousands of dollars on an assumption that it's going to be better. I think, I really would like to come up with someplace where we can actually find a study. I don't know if Chuck has any information on that, or...
The good news is, we don't have to do that today, right?
All right.
Good.
And maybe the type of...
Make a note, we'll write that down.
I'll take that...
I'll take that as an assignment.
Maybe some of these counties that have, that are, you know, more active in the mining would have some of those statistics.
And would the type of truck make a difference? More axles? Again, the tractor-trailer, would that be less vibration because the weight is spread differently? Same load, you know, 20-yard load?
Well, most axle weighed, 18,000 pound axle weights are the industry standard. So whether you have a tractor-trailer truck that has more axles, usually they have longer containers...
But they don't have that solid chassis that runs through with the motor and everything in a tractor-trailer type situation. I don't know if that would mean a lot, but I think it might mean something in vibration. And I see a lot of these trucks going with a full load without the third axle down, you know, the dump trucks that had that third axle, they still keep them up when they're driving with a full load. That'd be enforcement.
Dump trucks are used to haul fill because there are certain characteristics that allow them to place that fill, you know, once they get on site. Tractor-trailer trucks are different operation. Usually you have to have a much larger project, more room to operate to...
Well, they have these tractor-trailer trucks that are only still 20 yards, they have that small bed in the back.
They're still a little different operation.
So they wouldn't tip over is the main reason.
I still think if we deal with, if this were, if you deal with speed, numbers of trucks, type of surface, you'll begin to minimize that and maybe you can hit that happy median. So we really need to stay with something we can grasp right now without going out too far in the left field because, let's, if we stay on point, we can, we may be able to get some other stuff done, too.
Large dewatering pumps can also cause vibration, I have seen on sites.
Right, I mean, that's...
Large diesel pumps, if they're not properly mounted.
If staff is currently thinking that it would probably be best to have small mines, perhaps closer to major subdivisions?
Right.
If that is something you're thinking about, based on what you said when you began?
We have to be careful about the vibrations.
Oh, yeah. Because how do you, you know, how do you cause that to occur? I mean, people that want to develop the mines, I mean, they're the driving force and where they want to apply for a permit for a mine, even though obviously the closer you get, you get on a major arterial, you wouldn't have the damage or, that we currently have unlike 82nd.
Just if I could respond, one, and really, this really is kind of the same issue you would have inside the urban service area with a non-mine development that has, as Jim was mentioning earlier, you know, any type of subdivision west of 43rd in the South County especially, is going to have a large stormwater area, there's going to be excavation and moving on site and so forth. So, and it is going to depend on very local conditions, probably, with respect to...
Well, those dump trucks are going somewhere with the fill, so they have to drive in there and dump them and then go back out. So, I mean, I just think that, you know, we've heard complaints on vibration, but in this case, good, bad, or indifferent, we've had, we had a serious complaint on 82nd Avenue, but unless Jim knows of others, or Chris knows of others, or somebody at staff knows of numerous complaints over, let's say, 10 or 15 years, we've done a huge amount of development inside the urban service area, some on the outside. And I haven't, this is not one of the complaints I hear much in mine. I hear speed, I hear other complaints off and on, but not this, so, I mean, that's why I'm not trying to blow it off, but I just think we may be making a lot out of something right now that has not been a big issue. Okay? Everybody take that, all right. Take the hint?
Yeah, got it.
Got it, okay. All right, any other questions, either Stan, Chris, or Jim, from you all, the thoughts about the process on what we, where we stand? Stan, did you want to go through any of the items that, you know, we have, you put them up quickly, but I mean, we do have, there's 30 items of which we're going to attempt to address regulation that other and above, either we have already or not. I didn't know how you wanted to do that, you want to do it before or after public?
Well, I didn't spend a lot of time on them just because it's in, it's in the backup material, and I just kind of summarized them on the slides, just that...
Let's see what the comments we get.
Right, I think so.
All right, anybody else? All right, we're going to, we're going to open this up for a public discussion. I will start over on this side or whoever feels like it. We've got two mics that, if it looks like it's going to be Fast and Furious, we can use them both. If not, come on down and one at a time, whatever. The speakers, speaking areas are open, public hearing is now open. Lord have mercy, when the first candidate shows up.
But I live in an affected area, so that is why I'm here. My name is Susan Boyd. I am, I guess I should disclose that I am a candidate for county commissioner, but major reason I'm here is because I do live off of 82nd Avenue, and some lines do affect me. I only had a couple of comments, and they're very short, because I'm only basing on what I've heard today. So one of my comments would be what you just talked about. Basically, you were talking about trucks, mining trucks that would be going into a development to build a house. I would point out that that would just be maybe a day or two or a couple of days, and in case of a development, it would be pretty intermittent, maybe they're going to build 10 at a time for a while, and they do it and it's finished. But if you happen to live on the Egress route, the route where trucks are going past your house all day long, six or seven days a week, for 10 years, you're in a completely different situation. So I just wanted to point out that it's, it's an apples and oranges thing, so that it's very, I would ask you please to just keep into consideration that it is a very different situation that if your house is located near the mine, which would be going to many different places, but it's going past your house all the time. So that would be the main thing. If you give me one second, because it was hard to take notes, then...
Take it, you might back up just a little bit, Susan.
Oh, I always do that with it, is that better? Yes.
It was beginning to vibrate up here, so...
Okay, thank you. And I don't want to do that.
I want to see what it feels like.
Oh, I did have, yeah, I would think that, for notification purposes, my suggestion would be that people would be notified all along the Egress route. Because you may be a mile down from the mine, but the trucks still be, could be going past your house every single day. So I understand the half mile, but maybe we should take a look at the whole planned Egress route, and notifications should go all along that route because all, the people on that route would be affected.
With the, sometimes there's several routes, you know, once you, as you get further out, it's like a spider's web. Maybe there's a way to ask staff to look at where the truck traffic, whatever percentage of the truck traffic is going, you know, if we allow 200 trucks a day and 100 are going one way, that's something we can look at.
Something like that. And for today, that's, that's all I have, so, thank you very much. I always, 802-524 Street, and I always appreciate being able to come to public meetings, and I appreciate your listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Boyd. Anybody else on this side over here? Deevee?
Afternoon Commissioners. Victor Knight, 3295 Ranch Road. Want to share a couple of thoughts that I expressed at the original public hearings when the moratorium was enacted. And there's no question that what was going on in the 82nd Avenue corridor was the catalyst for this whole situation. And all of that truck traffic that Ms. Boyd was alluding to is going down 82nd or 69th Street. The proposal for Wild Turkey to come online, that project, I think there was some discussion about that being a 20-year project. I was reading through the staff report, which is a tremendous amount of work, and I applaud everybody for the input that they put into this thing, but I don't look at 10 years as being a temporary use. And certainly, a 20-year project is far from it. Six months is temporary. 10 years is long-term planning for me. And those kinds of impacts, long-haul routes, which create these vibrations and so forth, you've got so many complaints about, in the past, mines were pretty far off the beaten path. Yes, they were on the ridge where Red Stick Golf Course is right now. And yes, they're, they've been beautified and reclaimed and are now part of a beautiful golf course, but at the time that those were permitted 30 years ago, there wasn't anybody out there to complain about it. I find it a little troubling that the overall conclusion that mining is compatible in Ag 1, 2, and 3 districts, if properly regulated. I would submit to you that we need to look at the Ag 1 district as distinctly different. As Mr. Hamner knows, I believe, there's very little legitimate agriculture left in the Ag 1 district. It really has become a low-density residential district. People have bought into this idea, in fact, the CO2 plans and the LDRs have been changed to allow for planned developments in those agricultural communities where you cluster and you create an amenity base. If a mine was proposed just south of the Polo Grounds on the Gaudry property, which is a half a section or 320 acres, if one had been proposed there, these chambers would have been full of a whole lot more people than what the 82nd Avenue folks complained about in pertaining to Wild Turkey. Because again, there was no notification, the administrative approval. I do think that it's ramping this thing up, that you go to a...
Special exception.
A special exception and provide notification, but 300 feet, you know, that ain't going to cut it. You've got so many more people that are impacted. And I would submit that if you look at the Ag 1 district as more of a low-density residential, you've got two projects coming in up around the Quail Valley Golf Course where they, they're in the Ag district, it's 1 to 5 zoning, they're going to cluster their homes around beautiful lakes and so forth. This is a residential district. I would, I would submit, if I had my preferences and if I had the decision to make to eliminate many of the incompatibility issues, I would eliminate mining from the Ag 1 district period and make sure that it's all west of I-95. And I hear this five-mile hauling cost of another $1,100 per lot for the fill, hey, costs are going up all over the place, and $1,100 is not a, not a big thing. We're talking about impact fees going up another 70%. And I don't like the sound of that, you know, I'm a developer, too, but, you know, some of these costs are commensurate with the development, and they need to be borne by the, you know, in the right parties. And just sticking a mine where it happens to be convenient. I pointed out to the commissioners, the Board of County Commissioners, that I've got 40 acres of ag land inside the urban service district. It has rock on it, and I was approached by a rock mining company to, to mine that property. Why don't we just do it right down on Indian River Boulevard and have it right at your back door?
Deevee, how do you deal with, because it's not the chicken or the egg, but how do you deal with the fact, if you're a golf course, or if you're a residential, these areas around Quail Valley, that want to put in lakes for their lots? How would you suggest that we deal with the fact that they are still, those are sand mines, permitted sand mines as they exist today?
That's not being hauled offsite.
Now, there was a suggestion, there was, there was a suggestion made about the, and we never reached a real definition, but there was some conversation about being commercial versus, I'd say domestically or onsite. There's a limitation about what could go offsite, because some places can't absorb all their, all their sand.
Right.
There, I think that I talked to Stan about it, and Stan can correct me, but there's a, there's a timeframe involved. I think we give people six months, is that, in there, on those, on the lakes, like the...
Incidental to construction for any sized development is two months, a two-month window to haul offsite, but for larger developments, 350 acres or larger, they can go up to 18 months.
To haul offsite?
Haul offsite.
But I mean, let's say we've got a high, a piece of property that is 400 acres somewhere in the middle of this Ag 1 area, and they want to put in the, a lake, but they want to sell half of their fill off of it. Now, how would that affect, you know, I mean, how does that balance out?
Well, again, the, the difference is that it's a shorter period of time, it's 18 months versus, versus 10 years. And it's incidental to the, to the development.
Because I think this is where we were a little unclear about this declaration, is it, are you commercial, are you not commercial? Is that, is that why, how you get to that point, to get the 10-year window?
Right, well, one case, it's, it's shorter time period and it's incidental to the, to the development activity itself on site versus, you know, a mining operation, which true is, I don't think I said temporary, but it is interim use, 10 years, can be a very long time, I understand that. But it's just, it's just a longer period of time, and there are many more regulations. So what we're dealing with are the long, longer-term 10-year mining operations.
And one of the differences between a mining operation and incidental to construction is incidental to construction can occur in districts other than agricultural districts. To give you an example, the Waterway Village, the Devasta project, has a incidental to development mining permit, so they do have the 18 months to take fill off the site.
To me, that's, I'm glad you asked the question, and to me, it's just common sense. Anything that's ancillary to a project, incidental to a project, I just exempt it. If there is some excess fill or burden that needs to be shipped offsite, and that's, that's probably...
Well, it requires a lot, I mean, it requires the person doing the calculation of dirt to be as accurate as they can, because if you know you've got 30% of the dirt that's got to go offsite, you have 18 months to get it off, you've got to move. I don't know if that's, you know, we may be, the reason I was asking, the other side of it is you may be creating more truck traffic during at least a short period of time while they get it, get it going.
Yeah, but how often will it be that you need to take sand or dirt off of a site? Most of the time?
Often, and there's more often than not, yeah.
You're really going to have to overdig the site, though. You want to maximize your developable area, and having been through this fairly recently, I was delighted to find that I had material on site that I could use and never brought one truckload of material onto the site. If I'd continued digging, I could have been, you know, in the mining business. But I think that, you know, some common sense approach to anything that's incidental to a project, but other than that, full-scale mining operations, you know, east of I-95, there are very few places where you would not impact. And one comes to mind, there's 3,000 acres bordering State Road 510 owned by the Graves family. If they put mines in the middle of that and take that material out to State Road 510, they would have less impact on anybody else, but if you don't have a site that's big enough, and going into a paved infrastructure, you're going to have, you know, a huge amount of complaints. But if I had my preference, I'd love to see it eliminated from the Ag 1 district, keep it west of I-95. By the way, a lot of material that came out of the 82nd Avenue mines in the last six months went to Melmer. It went up 510 and went up I-95 and filling in a couple of different projects up there.
Deevee, and as an opinion, do you think that the situation on trucking or traffic would have been different if 82nd had been paved, if the county had the road in?
Where I'm located, I probably wouldn't have too many objections, some of the others, some of the complaints have been lessened, but when you look at the size and magnitude of the project that was proposed for the Wild Turkey project, you had a virtual train of trucks down there at the intersection of State Road 60 and 82nd Avenue, backed all the way up to 26th Street. And folks in the, in several neighborhoods in there, that's a, that's quite a burden, a heck of a noise, pollution problem, and...
But the paving would have helped.
No question, it would have alleviated some of the challenges. And I know 82nd is slay as it be paved sometime within our lifetimes, but...
Maybe in our lifetime.
I'd say find the magic.
By the time I get the Oslo Road interchange, probably.
Yeah, we talked about that 30 years ago.
Is it possible to, you know, we have planning and zoning, we had zone, we have so many houses in an area, why can't we have so many mines in an area, operating at the same time? And then when one's not operating, then it allows somebody else to go in there. I mean, I don't see why we need to have the same rules and regulations for, for the three Ag areas at the same time, is what Mr. Knight's bringing up. And even within like a zone, Ag Zone 1, you would have only so many active mines at one time, and if somebody's not active, then it would allow maybe Wild Turkey to go in there if the next one down is not functioning so well.
Well, especially the haul routes, we talked about. It was different... If it was different haul routes, it would be a different story also.
So you're only allowing a certain number to be operating at one particular time?
Yeah, I guess your objective in doing that would be to reduce the volume of truck traffic. So you could, I don't think it would matter if you had mining operations in the Ag One area north of 60 and then south of 60, because those don't really impact each other. But what you're talking about is limiting the number of mines in a short distance or in an area that'll impact one haul route.
Right.
And I think that's something we can look at, but again, it comes back to what's the volume that is desirable or necessary? Because we do look at capacity of roadways, and you know, 82nd Avenue, south of 60 is a truck route, and north of 60 will be a truck route when it's completed. So, and it was originally designed, and the entire improvement of 82nd Avenue was predicated on the concept of citrus highway, the idea of citrus trucks. So there will be...
Not in our lifetime.
There are fewer now, obviously, but, you know, there will be more volume when it is done.
Right. Well, when it's done, we could allow more volume. Right now, we'd have to allow less, is my point.
Right.
Point to the little thing we got in our pack, it was 2011, it might be finished. I know.
That, yeah, that's... It's gonna be a funding constraint. It's, I think, 60% designed right now, so it's gone through the first phase and almost the second phase. It's gone through project development, environmental, the PD&amp;E phase. They're almost done with design. Then they start to go through the right-of-way acquisition, construction phases, but it'll be a lot later than 2011.
I don't wanna break this up, but we really are not talking about just 82nd Avenue today. I...
And I'm not gonna talk about that.
Thank you.
Let me give one last point, and I'll wrap it up. Other counties, numerous other counties, are very progressive in addressing this and have designated special mining districts. And so I would submit to you that we should look at that. I don't wanna just throw everything out in Ag Two and Ag Three, because certainly some people are gonna be impacted. But you really need to think hard about eliminating this option from that bundle of rights on everything in the Ag One District. And I really appreciate your time and thanks for the effort.
The special exception use, Davy, the special exception use is a big, is a fairly big change.
It's a big change, but the notification...
It's not doing away with it, Mike.
And if we could be assured that the public hearing process would protect those rights, I can tell you, there's a lot of folks out there that have already talked to, you know, attorneys about, well, if this goes forward, then we're gonna file a class action lawsuit because this situation has now damaged all of these properties. I've been approached. I'm not part of that group, but I'm just, you know, that's a big issue. It's not, that's not me. But I'm sharing that with you, so you've gotta, you gotta look at this as a residential district. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Davy. Okay, yes, ma'am. Now, oh, wait a minute, excuse me. She stood patiently in the back forever. I couldn't get, I couldn't motion her to sit down for her own good.
Once I was up, I stayed there. I'm Linda Mitchell. I live at 8340 65th Street, and I emailed a letter that I asked be shared with you all, but I don't know if it got to you in time. I'm gonna try very hard not to be redundant, but we were asked at the last workshop to go ahead and complain when there were concerns. Most of my concern right now is probably gonna be addressed more at the next workshop, and it's about compliance and enforcement, and that's my biggest concern. I saw better your perspective about your definition of compatibility, compatibility, and what a complex situation you are looking at, and I'm respectful of that. But when you talk about $1,100 per truck, or whatever your number was there, I hope we are also gonna be looking at what would it cost to really be able to enforce the regulations?
We...
Because they are not being followed.
Right.
Absolutely are not right now. And to me, what would have to change is there'd have to be two policemen whose full-time job is to stand at the mines and to stand near the routes of the trucks. As soon as the trucks know there's nobody looking at them, they're not following the rules, and it's dangerous. A patient of mine who has an elderly grandfather who drove him to my farm two weeks ago could have been killed. We watched a truck tailgate him, just totally impatient, tailgating him. He was going fairly slow on the dirt road. It was a matter of a quarter of a mile till he got to the pavement. The truck passed him on the curve. The man probably didn't even know he was there behind him. And that's just one example. And so that's just my plea, that we also look at, let's compare these costs, and let's look at safety and health and welfare, and is it gonna be better to put some money into having it enforced if we're going to allow it at all, or is it better to not allow it at all?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Amy Banov. I'm an architect in town, and I'm also a resident of the 69th Street area. And I have a couple of items. One to concur with the previous item. I noticed right after the two mines were held to their original haul routes that the problem actually got way worse up on 69th Street because they were diverting south on 82nd Avenue. And now it has gotten a little bit better as people are not looking quite as strongly. Secondly, I do think you have to look at the cumulative impact of various mines, the concept of how many trucks are on the volume of the roads at one time. Thirdly, the notice information. I also had the note that it shouldn't just be a half mile from the mine. A half mile in Ag zoning could be two or three property owners, but all along the haul route, that's where you'll get your most impact. And finally, I really think you need to look at the zoning code very carefully in terms of Ag, and when you get done with this current issue, don't put it all to bed and sweep it away. You really should look at all of the items in the Ag zoning. If you look at our matrix, you'll see almost all of them, A1, A2, A3, go right down the list, identical, PPP, SSS, if it's the same exact permitting process are applied to all. And they are not all equal anymore. They might have been 40, 60 years ago when the Ags were separated into the Ag One, Ag Two, and Three. But now, as Victor said, people have encroached into those Ag zoning for things other than Ag, and you need to evaluate very seriously what items are gonna bring the people out because it's an issue. You know, today, it's a mine. Next year, it might be a recycling center. The year after, it might be something else on this list. So I would encourage you to look very hard at that. Most counties zoning provides these natural buffers from the most industrial and the most concentrated uses to the lower ones, and our Ag zones seem to be able to do that from just the geography. Ag One can be that buffer as it gets farther out to the Ags Two and Ag Three and into the more rural areas. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
My name is Al Vederi, excuse me, and I live at Westside Villas. At the last meeting, I brought up a couple of points, and I was just wondering if they have been addressed, or I didn't hear anything mentioned about it. I noticed in the presentation that there was a seven to five...
There's some time zones, yes, sir.
Time zone.
Their current rules to that effect, yes, sir.
Okay. I had mentioned that living in Westside Villas, seven to 10 would probably be an intolerable situation.
Seven to five?
Seven to five, I'm sorry. We have a light, as you know, on 60th and 82nd Avenue. If you had 60, if I remember, it was 66 trucks an hour, which would be more than a truck a minute, you would have a constant line of trucks with no space in between, because just of the light trying to get through, it would take hours for that timeframe of trucks to go through that...
Yes, sir. I was just, while you were talking, I was looking, scanning down our list. We have in this list, in the backup, we, numbers of trucks are addressed, are going to be addressed, let's put it that way.
It would seem to me that a couple, I'm not trying to tell you what to do, but a couple...
Just get in line. Get in line.
Very important points would be the times of day that a truck could...
Do you have a recommendation, hours that are more conducive to what you would like to...
My thought would be 10 to 3 would be an absolute maximum.
Okay, well, we'll write that down.
The other...
Maybe wishful thinking, but we'll put it down.
Well, we can try, can't we? The other point would be the number of trucks permitted per hour.
Right. That's very, that's a big target.
Those two items, I think, would help the situation. And again, and as I mentioned, in addition to Westside Villas, we have ranchland across the street, which is an extremely senior citizen development, and that would pose a great problem for them also in getting in and out of there.
Yes, sir.
So I just wonder, have these things...
I think that they're, they're not addressed specifically yet, but they're addressed to be addressed as regulations. That's part of this 30, list of 30 items that we intend to regulate, either more thoroughly or have regulation or more thorough regulation.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Don't take my word for it, though, you keep watching.
Okay.
I see Miss Fransky.
Good to see all of y'all today. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. Suzanne Fransky, 8190 37th Street.
This isn't about the class action suit, is it?
Aren't you a sweetie pie? Good to see the staff and good to see everyone here. And just wanted to bring...
Suzanne, give her your name and address. She lives off...
Oh, I'm sorry. Suzanne Fransky at 8190 37th Street, corner of 82nd and 37th. And I appreciate you remembering our conversations about the destruction to homes. My house, I would invite all of you, please, to come and see it, as well as the road on South 82nd today. As it relates to the house, I have severe foundation cracks, which only happened when the mining started. And I've also had four glasses that walked off my kitchen shelves and broke because the house shook so hard. And it's serious. You know, I'm thinking, how do I get that resolved? Who's gonna pay for that? You know, who allowed that to happen? And it's very upsetting. You know, it's my home, and there are a lot of other homes out there. Another home that is contemplating this, has the same, believes that it happened from that as well. I know mine did, because my house was only two and a half years old. Truck started running, and when you have glasses falling off your shelves, you know you're in trouble, and your wall's shaking. But that's the first thing. And secondly, regarding what South Florida does, Martin County and all the other counties, you know, I've gotta tell you the truth. I'm not terribly interested in what they have done, because I thought Indian River County was unique and special. I thought that that's why we chose to live here instead of in Dade County, Broward County, Martin County, St. Lucie County. I thought that's what Indian River County was about, being unique. I also wanted to address, if I may, the conditions of the road. Indeed, the truck traffic is now going northbound on 82nd, which has never really, I mean, those of us that are on southbound, we feel for our neighbors on northbound, because we know what it was like on southbound. Southbound, there's at least 350, 400 residents between the ranchland and all the other residents on the east side and then us further up, not counting when you go on up 82nd. But today, I had a mission to go northbound where it's still, not where the miners are, but where it's dirt road still, and they have gravel. The miners have fixed their road, which I'm gonna say, I don't go there too often, but it's much better than it was. However, what we've been left with is a residual of mud and muck. And today, the reason I came in late is because since I was on a mission, I was in my truck, not in my car. If I was in my car, I'd still be waiting for the tow company to come. I got stuck on that road again. I would beg you, please go out and look at that road tonight. Take your car down, blow your horn, so we'll get our pickups to come pull you out. But I'm not kidding, if the sun's been out all day, it is nothing but a mud-sludge road. And I got stuck, had to get out, get aboard, had to go back home, change clothes to come in, and I was dressed to come in. And it's so frustrating, because it's not, no one can monitor this, or no one has done it effectively, and we've been talking about this for well over two years. And I had two struts break in my car. I mean, I didn't even know a car had struts, but it's very expensive. I mean, that's thousands of dollars, and I'm sure it's from that road, you know? So anyway, I wish you'd come out, please. This is an open invitation. Please come look at the foundation of my house. It's very clearly cracked, and it's half-inch cracks. You'll see them all the way through. And also, please come and drive the road today. I mean, we can't keep coming back for help over and over. You know, this is not something we created. At the last meeting I was at, you had invited a gentleman from Fisher Company to come and speak, and he discussed that once the base of these roads are destroyed by these trucks, there's really nothing you can do about them. And that's the situation. We've been left with that residual, and I wish you'd come see it. I'd really appreciate that. The next thing is, as it relates to risk management, on 69th, if you're, that road on the side where the trucks are loaded going out eastbound, it's a porpoise road now. It's a porpoise road. So when you talked about the impact fees that the truckers have to pay, look at the fees we as county taxpayers are paying to repair these roads, and that's gonna be all over the county. We've already paid for one bridge, everybody in this community. Now, look, just drive 69th and look at that. And it's slowed down some. Wait till it ramps up again. And more importantly, you need to really go when the schools are running, because when you see those big dump trucks bearing down on the back of those school buses, I'll tell you what, it sets a focus real clear for you real fast, and I have seen that repeatedly, and it's a visual anybody can go look at. And the other thing is, I guess that when we talk about what the miners are paying and, you know, who's monitoring their traffic, it all comes down to the citizens of Indian River County. We're paying, we've had near-death accidents on that road. That's all recorded. You know, there've been sheriff's deputies out there when we've had serious accidents. And when it's not raining, the south end of that route, the dust is so, it's not a dust storm, it's like desert storm. I mean, it's not just little dust kicking up on you. You can't see where you're going. So we either live with mud and getting stuck, or dust and the risk of these accidents and the storms. So that's really all I have to say, except this is so serious. This is the tenor of our county for years to come, and I understand, as does everyone else, about the regulations being made, but this is Ag One. Ag One permits for these uses of residences and farms, and it's a conservation movement on that road. I mean, these folks, everyone there, needs protecting. We're the ones that are paying the taxes. The communities that live there, we need help protecting the services we've paid for, and it's not just monetary values. It's life, it's risk, it's death, it's the safety of children and animals, and it is actually the whole complexion of what our county will look like moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Mr. Sexton.
I'm Sean Sexton, 7880 37th Street, which is just off 82nd Avenue. And the primary issue of compatibility that I hold nearest and dearest regarding mining in our vicinity is that of groundwater. And I think the Ag Advisory Committee made a recommendation that a hydrological study of the county be made and that we establish some baseline information with which we can determine when and if, if and when mining occurs. There has been impact on the vicinities of the mine, the cone of effect, so to speak. And I see it listed in the report, and I hope that that's a recommendation that's taken to heart, not only by your group, but by the commission. And I would like to also suggest that we actually have wells, monitoring wells, if we have any mines contiguous to our ranch, that we have wells, monitoring wells on our place as well, and that that be an expense borne by the miner, so that we can know whether we're being affected or not. If mining is imminent, I'd like them in there as soon as possible, so that we can have a starting point from which to determine whether we're really having our water table jerked out from under us or not. We are in a situation now, we've always been in a situation of trying to succeed at our farming enterprise, but in a certain way, we're in a contractual, we're contractually abl... obliged to farm, and we take that obligation or that obligement to heart, and it's not a thing we can do without proper water resources. So, I do hope that you pay attention to that condition of our lives, and help us to do what we're doing in the same way that you might help someone else to mine. Thank you.
Thank you. Stan, in the monitoring list of our items, we refer to monitoring, were we including, at one point during our environmental session, we talked about monitoring wells and the timeframe and distances on and off property, is that something you were intending in that?
Yes, there are really two approaches. One is kind of a county-wide approach to update a nineteen eighty-eight study that was done countywide, and that's a recommendation of the Agriculture Advisory Committee to get county-wide data. And in the regulations that are being considered, at this point in time, it would be on a site-by-site basis. And, you know, generally, you have monitoring wells around the perimeter of the project site, the idea being that if there's any problems, it'll show up there before it'll show up further out from the mine. And to get baseline data right now, county does not have a requirement for the baseline data, but St. John's does. However, the monitoring doesn't start until they're already in the water table and in their operation.
Right.
The idea being that you get at least one wet season and one dry season monitoring reading before you start-
I mean, the recommendation, or the conversation revolved around monitoring a year prior to mining, so you had a better baseline.
That's correct.
I'm not sure if that was something we were really following on or not. But I think what Sean's talking about, and South Florida's doing this with the Everglades plans and the water retention areas, is the monitoring wells are actually going on the adjacent, they're putting, not only on your property line, but into an adjacent property, if it was so requested, I think. And I didn't know if special exception use would allow that or not.
We haven't, have not yet addressed it, that particular idea, in other words, if an adjacent property owner would allow a monitoring dwell to go on his or her property-
It's part of the plan, because they're not sure with their reservoirs, you know, they're monitoring the same thing.
Right.
I'm not sure how to consider, I'm not sure how we do that here, but that's something we probably need to make sure it's in the mix.
We will add it to the-
When the county was putting in, is putting in its wells up there in North County, I mean, there was a certain amount of monitoring done then, right? And you, that was more or less required at the time?
I don't know if they were monitoring, or they just took history from the wells around it.
Yeah, I'm not sure, you're right, if that was historical data that they happened to have.
I think that, I thought the future, in the future, they're supposed to be doing this to find out the effect of those three new wells, or the six new wells, I guess, that are going in there.
Put it, actually establishing monitoring wells. And I wasn't sure, that's, I thought-
And especially since the county now does own the development rights on the Sexton Ranch, I think it'd be, we should protect all our development, the properties that we have purchased with our bond money, so that should just be prudent county action, I would think. Because there's the other, we're talking out on the Ag Three, the other ranch that we purchased, we should probably do some monitoring there, too. Thanks.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Sharon Cowan, I live at twenty-one twenty-five Eighty-second Avenue Southwest, Flyin' Ranches subdivision. I would like to just piggyback what everyone else has said, but also add to the fact that what we have in the books now is really old information, and lifestyles change and things change, and we need to change to keep up with that. I get the distinct feeling that staff sometimes considers the people, those of us who live in Ag One, Two, and Three, as people who maybe don't matter. There's continued reference to it's okay to put the mining operations here because there aren't many people there. Well, we're still there, and we're still people, and we would like to be respected, and our lifestyles be thought of as just as valuable as someone else's. I'm taxed at the same rate that someone who doesn't have to put up with a mining operation is. That's really not fair. Had I known that a mining operation was going to come into my area eight years ago, I would never have bought there. I didn't have that benefit. So, when I'm already there, and I know I made this comment last year at one of these meetings, we were there first. To have something like this forced on us when we don't really have a choice is really not fair as taxpayers. So, I would just ask that you consider Ag One, in particular, a residential, just like Mr. Knight said, we are a residential area, and we need to be thought of as such, and when we're, especially when we're already there and we don't have a choice in this, we have to live with it, and maybe somebody needs to look at our tax structure. Thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am. Anyone else on the right-hand side, in the center, center section, center section? Chuck, come on, on the left-hand side.
Chuck Kramer, one oh seven two nine, U.S. Lawrence Sebastian. I wasn't going to say anything today, but I just want to address a couple of issues here, one of which just came up about adjacent property well monitoring or well installation, that's a tough issue. Been there?
Right.
Some cases, owners don't mind you accessing the property to put in adjacent property wells, and in some cases, some owners all of a sudden discover that they have a wetland area on their property, they get upset, and the way they discover it is through the environmental assessment of your property. So, I don't know if you want to make that, you know-
I'm not sure it's going to be something, but I want it in the mix, is all, Chuck. Only, I think under the special, under the special exception use, it's something that if this, we continued it in Ag One, for instance, you could, if they requested it, it could be required, that's all.
Mm-hmm. I've just, and I've had that other agencies impose that, and sometimes it doesn't work well. I'm not quite sure what I would think would be a real significant vibration from trucks on the highway to adjacent properties, as far as the distances involved to those residents. However, I think it's minimal at best, because if I look at that in the big picture, by now, every house on the FEC Railroad will have collapsed. I don't think, I don't think it's that relevant. I don't think, particularly on cases of roads with adjacent canals, where the horizontal transmission of the vibration is affected, I don't think those vibrations are that severe. If I were to have a structural problem on a dwelling or a home, I would look at other factors besides the fact that the truck traffic out on a stabilized road would cause that impact. And I just want to get that in there, because I'm not quite, you know, looking at that as a big factor. I don't recall ever even having a discussion with the county in the almost twenty years I've been here, over vibrations generated by trucks on highways. Pump vibrations-
Didn't know, Suzanne.
Minimal at best. I mean, I can't imagine a pump on a site with, including the county setbacks being a vibration issue, unless you had an engine on it the size of a locomotive engine, I can't see it being a problem. When I was twenty years old, ten years was a long time. When I was thirty years old, it was kind of a long time. On fifty years old, it's not very long time. Mining's still a temporary use, ten years is still temporary, and I think we have to keep looking at it as a temporary use. Mr. Morris figures, I liked what he did very much, however, I think it excluded some other issues, drain field sand, yard fill, which, you know, can be anywhere from twenty to, ten to twenty additional loads, drain field sand, four to eight additional loads, I think you need to add some cost to that figure. And I would be hard-pressed in an already depressed industry to add any cost to the price of a home, period. I think when you try to look west of one ninety, or I ninety-five, as far as to mine west of I ninety-five as a solution to your problems, those trucks aren't going to fly back into the county, they're going to drive some of the very same routes to get back into the east side of ninety-five and into the service area that they're using now to haul material from pits that are located on the east side of ninety-five, so I don't see that as a cure-all, it's not going to be. As far as Eighty-second Avenue, and I'll make this comment, because I believe when Wild Turkey's first talked about submitting their plan, they talked about two hundred trips.
That's right.
That's not out of line with what anybody else has done on Eighty-second. And the scenario of continuous trucks, one after the other, for the entire day, I don't recall, I mean, I'm in the fill business, and I've never seen trains of trucks. Things happen during the course of a day to break up that traffic, you don't see constant, constant, constant trucks. I don't know the situation on sixty-ninth, that may be happening because you have routing taking two pits' worth of traffic up those roads, and maybe the solution to that is to not restrict them to a single route, that may be something you want to look at. But I don't see the train effect happening going south. If Wild Turkey was to exist with two hundred trips a day, you're not going to have the train effect of Route sixty out, I don't believe it's going to happen. And as far as anything else, I want everybody to remember, a lot of us in the mining industry, we're citizens of the county, too. Taxpayers of the county, citizens of the county, and we're trying to run a business just like many other businesses in the county, and we want to be treated fairly, just like everybody else. And that's it.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you, thank you for your time, have a nice day.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Fred Mencing. I like Mrs. Boyd, I'm a candidate for County Commission District One. Have been in the trucking business, my parents were involved as partners in a quarry. On the issue of vibration, the American trucking industry has done everything they can to take the vibration out of the truck. They've gone from hard springs to this, to that, to air ride, so they can haul electronics without breaking it. They know that the surface of the road determines what vibration is transmitted off the road, the smooth of the road, this is an issue that has to be weighed out. A little sand mine, it may produce a million yards of sand in its life, cannot put the money into a road that a five-million-yard sand mine can put into a road. And the overall impact to the community, and how many homes or CBS warehouses or whatever can be built from this mine, have to be evaluated into how you address the problem going from a dirt road, which washboards within hours of grading it, to a hard road, a macadam or blacktop, whatever we wish to call it, that, you know, you won't have the vibration This is something that, you know, I think you need to, you know, look into, realize that, you know, sand miners don't have the deep pockets everybody thinks they have, taxpayers don't have the deep pockets, but also, if this area is going to grow in any way, sand mines, like jails and landfills, we've got to have, you've got to come up with regulations to make it work out. And, you know, the question came up on vibration, and that was the main thing, that, you know, I think you have to realize that if you build a smooth road, it'll stay smooth, the same as I will tell you, if you drive through a mud puddle on a dirt road at one mile an hour, that mud puddle won't get very big. But if everybody drives through it thirty miles an hour, it'll get real big, because the hydraulics are pushing through there, will do that, the same happens with a dirt road as washboarding. If everybody goes at a mile an hour, it'll never washboard, but go at twenty, it's going to washboard. If it's paved, it's going to stay intact if it's built right. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Anybody else? Last, I'm surprised. No, no, Suzanne, I mean, we don't, we understand your house and the vibrations, believe me, we duly know.
The health, safety, and welfare-
Well, come up to the, come up to the mic, and-
Thank you, and I understand that all of us are taxpayers, and I think that certainly in our community and in our state and in our nation, that health, safety, and welfare should be preeminent and supersede that of a cash value. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, anybody else? If not, we're going to close public hearing. I did this last time and had to reopen it, are we sure?
Steve's not here.
Huh? All right, we're done with the public hearing, for the time being, anyway. We've got a list of items here and a couple of thoughts. Stan, I was just thinking out, thinking about a few things that we might have looked at, too. On big property, is there a way to, we do this twenty-year phase-in, I wonder if we could, if we're in an area, whether it's Ag One, Ag Two, or Ag Three, where there is a potential for residential, because that could be anywhere in those three areas, if we could start the farthest away, the twenty acre phase would be the farthest away from potential residential, rather than, you know, next door to it. If you've got three hundred acres and you start on the north, and there's a potential house, or people on the south, at least over time, you're working their way, you'll be, would seem to be, to be less damaging than, if you want to consider it that, damaging.
Right, so you're saying to throw into the mix of regulations, when we look at the phasing-
When you look at the layout, the phasing and whatnot, it's maybe start, if there's ten houses on one side and twenty on the other, I don't know if it's fair, but start with the leased housing if there's, if that was the case, if you can do that. I don't know how we do the number of mines along a route, but I think that that's something that we've got to consider.
And I think that, again, goes back to what is the appropriate volume of truck traffic for the type of road especially, and looking at those impacts, because really, what we're looking at is the haul, the haul truck.
Well, I mean, it's, in theory, if we said this route will haul two hundred trucks a day, and the first mine comes in, and that's, we give the first mine two hundred trucks a day, then somebody's got to wait until we move on to the next, before they come back in, is that, you know, that, we haven't been doing that, but that's-
Right, well, you have, again, this is dealing with, you know, especially when you're talking about shared haul routes.
Right.
And I think, you know, we've talked about what, is there a threshold where paving, you know, would make a difference and allow, you know, you'd have a higher allowed volume of truck traffic on a paved road versus unpaid road?
Out of curiosity, to follow on what George is saying, have you looked at regulations that we could, you know, specific wording? Because what George was saying is, is how many years, how many residences are along that street, what number of trucks is conducive to that area?
Right, and again, the overall, first of all, the parameter that we're dealing with right now is that access from the mine will be directly to a major roadway. Eighty-second Avenue, Oslo Road, five-ten, five-twelve, those are major roadways. And so, that's the first, that's an appropriate, in staff's opinion, criterion, that has to be a major roadway. So, you're dealing with a major roadway, and what is an acceptable amount of truck traffic when it's in an unpaid condition, when it's in a paved condition? And this concept, too, and the concern that's been expressed about, you know, trains of trucks, a whole, I've heard Chris Moore use the term platoon, you know, a whole grouping of trucks at one time, and what that, what that does in an intersection. Those are the types of things that we've discussed and that we would be looking for fashioning regulations to address.
Greg.
A couple of thoughts. I think next August is going to be a very interesting session, because I think we're here for a couple of reasons. One was a scare out of Miami, and second was absolute non-compliance on Eighty-second Avenue. And Chuck's comments interested me in that, I know he's been doing this for a very long time, and I don't want you to have to get back up, Chuck, I don't mean that, but I just wonder if you have seen before the conditions and any of the mining that you've done that have been associated with Eighty-second Avenue, where there's been such an allowance for homes, people, to be affected by an activity such as that. The other thought I had is, it's interesting to hear the concerns about Ag One, Two, and Three, and I would have no problem at all seeing those rewritten, because I think they have changed a lot since the inception of those zones. But I think it would be extremely important, if that were to happen, that in the future, that the county, cause people who are going to go in those areas for whatever uses may be, understand the stipulation of that area, so that it doesn't become a fluid document and effect, and that the inching of new things in each one of those zones occurs, and then people say, "Look, I want this this way now." I think we have a requirement to allow them to know upfront what the conditions of use are going to be in the future based on those rewrites, so that they can make decisions as to where they want to place themselves, or their- as to where they want to place themselves or their businesses or whatever it may be.
I think that's why the survey that the Ag Committee recommended that should be done, because then we could get an idea.
The Ag Committee did that. That's what he, the Ag Committee went over it, and the only change was special exception on mining, right?
Yeah, actually, and Mr. Sexton is on the committee, and the two recommendations, one was on the baseline data countywide, and the other was on going to special exception in all three of the districts.
Yeah, but I'm saying we need to implement that.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I understand it's there, but we need to have it done. It needs to be brought before the County Commission. What's the status of that?
Well, you're talking about the overall, yeah.
Countywide.
Yes. Well, the Ag Advisory Committee may, that could get reported to the board one of two ways. Either the Ag Advisory Committee has a representative present that to the board. We'll certainly, when we report to the board, it'll probably be either at the end of August or beginning of September. On this whole rewrite, we will report that as well.
Because that would be an important issue in your planning ahead, so that people do know in advance what's happening, where these sites are, and there'd be more information.
Part of what the impetus when they went through this was tied to the, it started with, they were going to do it anyway, I think, right, Sean? And then it got pushed ahead because of the mining issue. So it's kind of, it's moving forward with the mining recommendations, that's the...
I was worried that people might consider it's too costly to do the study, and I think it's...
It's going to be a fact. It's going to be a factor at some point, the hydrologic study will be, could be.
The U.S., yes.
The, I think one thing that we, maybe among us we ought to discuss that to me is, I think we've got a list of 30 items, and you all have all looked at them. If you have a question about them, you can bring them up. But I think they have done a fairly good job of going over all of the concerns and listing the pros and cons, and are attempting to address some of the issues within the context of rules and regulations within the three districts. I think the only issue that needs to really, probably the staff may want guidance on, and we all may differ on, and that is whether or not you have mines in Ag 1 or you don't. I mean, if you go, I don't think there's any question about Ag 2 and 3. I haven't heard a complaint yet. But if you change, because if you change to special exception use, you bring in a whole lot more criteria. The notice area needs to be considered, whether it's more the route or half-mile. I think that'll come out in the regs down the road. But the only other question is whether or not we go ahead and maintain mining in Ag 1 or 2. There's not a whole lot, there's not a whole lot of area left in Ag 1 for mines, but it's not going to change the western edge between, what, 66th and 95, and especially on the northern up by 510, there's a huge, there's a big area with the basins, there's along 82nd Avenue, there's still mining area. And then to the south of 60, I think there's probably less, but there's still area. So you have to probably let them know whether we're going to maintain mines or not, because that's, I mean, I hear this, "Don't do it," but on the other hand, I hear people saying "We can do it, we can regulate it." And in fairness to Chuck and the Fishers, they're one of the reasons we have been listening to him, and I know that it sounds like it's pro-mine, not pro-mine, but is that the Fishers have put mines in the middle of subdivisions in Sebastian, and they have little to no complaints. So we have to, you have to trust somebody somewhere on the other side, if you want to call it that, but they've done a heck of a job, so he can't, you have to listen to what he's saying, and it's the mine operator or how they do it. Now, whether it's stacking mines on 82nd that created the problem that we're here for, I don't know. But I, for one, hate to see us do away with the mining in Ag 1, because I think that it's still an issue on traveling. But I'm just going to tell you that. But I think we can do a lot better job as a county of regulating it. Okay.
Do we want to go through these 30 items?
If you've got questions about any one of them, I don't...
I've got some recommendations.
Okay. Then we can, we'll go through the items quickly, and if you've got questions or whatnot, then we come back. But I think we need to think about, the real thing, the big issue to me is Ag 1 or not Ag 1.
Early on, we talked about no discharge of the de-watering, Stan. All de-watering is to remain on-site.
Right. Let me just, as we're going through these, do you all, excuse me, want to go through Attachment 9, where we have those 30?
Yeah.
And we can be referring to numbers?
Yes. The first one is surface water discharging or de-watering. We had talked about keeping all de-watering on-site, no discharge off-site.
Right. And we had discussed that, and there was some ambivalence on that at the end of the other workshop. Really, two approaches. One is you have an absolute requirement that there be no discharge, and then the other approach is to monitor the discharge. And of course, there are reasons given why you might want to allow discharge to be maintained off-site. There may be historic flows and so forth, and it would be better to do it that way. So what we took away from that was to allow, I mean, somebody could have no discharge from off-site if they wanted to, or they could go the monitoring route. And so what we've discussed here is, if they go the monitoring route, they've got to do baseline data at the outfall points.
Do we want to put a timeframe on it, one year, or just leave it at two seasons?
I don't think, in this particular case, we're talking about surface water, so we're concerned about water quality, not seasonal fluctuations for groundwater. So I don't think we need the seasonal so much as we need, and we can look into that, but we...
We talked about just not allowing that. Is this, is there some part of the mining that is necessary to allow discharge?
There could be some reasons, there could be some reasons why you want to allow discharge.
Can we make that the exception now?
Well, I think, I don't think you do. I mean, I think you want to give the option of no discharge or monitor the discharge. And I think there's going to vary from site to site. There are going to be some reasons why you'd want to allow discharge. And it could have some, if you did not allow discharge on some sites, I think you could probably, you might wind up with more lake area than you really want, at the end of the day.
Yeah, but it wouldn't impact...
And again, I think as long as you're monitoring that the discharge, the quality of the discharge is not degrading what the historical discharge has been, then I think you've addressed the issue. And that's why we've, but you're right, it was a discussion point, there was not agreement at the first workshop on that.
Stan, does no discharge mean inside a 500-year event or 100-year event?
Well, that's the other issue yet to be fleshed out. If you went with a no discharge rule, yeah, what do you do during certain storm events? You've got to design for some storm events. So, yeah, you're right, at some point, Mother Nature's going to create a discharge at some level. That would be, if you went to no discharge, you'd have to define that.
I mean, the reason I ask is I was under the impression, and Chuck, somebody can help me here, is that if you didn't do any discharge, you say you could create more lake space, it would be also, you mean, you shrink the size of the mine?
Yes.
I mean, it could be you had to make a smaller mine.
Right, you might, or a larger site. But you might have more site area covered by water, and you may not want to force that as an outcome.
That mine we visited on 82nd Avenue there, that was self-contained discharge, and seemed to be working quite well for them.
Right, I think it might on some mines, it might. You just might not want to constrict that. If, again, the water quality is not degraded, and they can prove that by baseline data and monitoring data, then that's one thing. If they want to go to no discharge, but I think under, like Mr. Smith was bringing up, and under some stormwater design, at some point, there will be discharge if there's a huge storm. You need to be prepared for that.
Anybody else got other questions? We have to go back to the other part.
Oh, we get the traffic and nuisance, I have another one.
I think on traffic, again, the traffic volume tying that, and again, the standards for the roadways are in there as well. Is there a threshold for upfront paving of a haul route and that sort of thing? I think that's already in there. The items that kind of additionally came out of today's input, I think, one was, we will look for studies on vibration and see if we can get some of that information and have Public Works look at that. The other item that came up a couple of times was on the notice requirement. Half-mile may make sense, but also along the primary haul route, any parcel that's fronting that, give them notice as well.
Yes.
One thing I would point out, I think if you do that, and that's certainly a legitimate idea, your word will get out. And so if there's somebody that uses that haul route, but they're a couple of parcels away, if the people along that haul route get, hear about it, good chances are the other...
Well, I think that what you need to do is balance that with the percentage of the trucks coming out. I mean, if there's one truck that's going to be on your haul route, I'm not sure that the county needs to go to the expense of notifying that whole route, but potentially the half-mile and/or a distance down, a reasonable distance down, like down 69th to 66th, right along the edge of the road or something, probably would have made sense.
Right. I think that the primary haul route, as I'm using that term, would probably mean where you get to your first major road intersection. And so the primary haul route is going to be, is going to be the roads that's going to get the majority of the traffic from the trucks, and that's what you'll use for notice.
Are those notices computer-generated or flagged automatically when you determine the routes?
Well, what we would do, for any of our notice requirements, we have a computer system that, and basically it goes off the tax roll, whoever's on the latest tax roll. One thing that is kind of an advantage to going to special exception, there are two public hearings there, so if there are any notice issues that come out, we get a return mail and that sort of thing. That issue may happen at the P and Z level, and there'll be time to straighten that out or try to get a more up-to-date address for the second hearing. Kind of gives you two chances of that.
On the traffic, we talked about Jake brakes. We don't mention it here in one of these items.
There was...
Not maybe forbidding it, but restricting it, anyway.
That's correct. I think the only place that you could, and this was a lot of discussion from Chris Moore, I think the only place that you could restrict Jake brakes, in his opinion, was on-site, that when you get off-site, if a vehicle has a braking system, that to tell them that they can't use it could be a traffic safety issue. And he did not support that. So I think if there were to be any regulations about Jake brakes at all, it would be probably use on-site.
On-site.
And I think that's Public Works.
Isn't there a sign now on 69th Street when they make that turn forbid Jake brakes?
And operators can do that themselves. They may be able to instruct it, but again, Public Works staff was not comfortable telling someone they couldn't use a braking system on the public road.
By liability, yeah. The other thing is, again, this would be enforcement, would be better covers on these trucks. A lot of these covers are pretty well torn up and beat up. And there has been some industries where they sprayed a load with binding materials, especially in the coal mining industry. The railroad cars, as they leave a coal mine, they're sprayed the top with some type of binding material to prevent the dust from coming off these trucks as they're going down the road. Now, do we look into anything like that?
Well, that's part of the, one of the suggested requirements is kind of a control plan for spillage. And there are a couple of different methods that you can use, and this kind of gets back to the best management practices. There may be more than one technique, and they can choose one. If it's not working, they've got to go to another one. That would kind of be the idea of the best management practices for something like that.
But then again, it's enforcement, too.
Right. Well, that's the key to all this, is enforcement. At some point, if you've got all these options, what do you do when? And that's what the next...
The only other comments I'd have was maybe limiting the size of the load to 15-yard as maximum, instead of 17 or something. And then we clarified the existing 20-acre phase-in to maybe just 10 acres, where it would be less impact, instead of saying 20 acres at a time. We do 10 acres at a time would be a lot less impact, both environmentally and hydrologically and everything else. I'm sure they could, mining 10 acres at a time is still a pretty good-sized mine, instead of the 20-acre requirement we have now. You know, that's all I have. I don't know. I don't know if it's economically feasible or too much of a burden.
Just kind of the only context I can provide is, kind of like our 10-year rule, the 20-acre phase, I've not found in any other regulations of any other county, I think it's pretty restrictive, as far as I can tell, in terms of context and how much, kind of looking at how much exposed area that you have. Economically, it seems to work in this area. I don't know if less works or not. And at some point, there's a dividing line there, and I'm not sure where that is.
That's all I have. We can, I mean, we may need to talk to some people about, I guess.
Yeah.
I don't know. Okay. Anybody else got any things going through here?
One absolutely last question, if there is one.
Go ahead. Your wisdom is always worthy of comment.
I just want to know if the commission imported those three lights from Pam and John.
I don't know. I feel like we're, this is a hot seat, but it's kind of like, you know, I don't know, our halos maybe ought to be affecting...
They don't want us to look up, that's all.
I really do think, and I don't want to beat a horse with this, but I'm telling you, the issue is that the biggest consideration in the end of this is whether or not you mine in Ag 1 or not. And I said I don't particularly want to lose it, but I mean, there's not a big area. I know Chuck and them, it affects the distances of hauls, but that's the one thing, I think probably, if you want the final word, all these regulations are great, but I think each one of us need to be thinking about yes or no on that one issue. Okay? Anything else? Stan, you got any other questions, or you want any other guidance? I mean, I think you all have done a remarkable job, considering, we go off on tangents, we've talked about trying to drown ourselves or dry ourselves out with water and then run over trucks, but I think we've got a terrific list of items where we've really brought a lot of points to bear. I believe we've got a lot of regulation that addresses what's already here, but I think by the time we get through, we probably will be better off. We'll see when we see your next list. And I do believe, changing from administrative permit to special exception is in itself, opens the door, a step in the right direction, because we have a whole lot more say-so than on any given mine. So, thank you all for all your work. Thank everybody for coming. Where's Eric?